You just care about the city of Los Angeles. Everyone knows the important part that water plays in our city, in any city, but water, because you find yourself sitting next to Marty on a five-hour plane trip to Washington, DC, and you learn more about water than you have ever needed to know about water. But that's, that's, shows your passion, appreciated your friendship over the years. I want to thank you. It was some time ago that you called me up and you asked me, "Hey, John, could you hire my son Eric for a couple of months?"
You're just a really great human being. You know, expertise aside, you know, on the issues of energy and water and how do we deliver it in the cost-effective manner to your home. We're going to miss you terribly. Wish you didn't have to go, you know, but we know that's a decision that you've made for the betterment of yourself and your family. Wish you nothing but the best. Please stay connected to all of us in some form, way, or shape, because, you know, we will need you, you know, if not, you know, for technical expertise.
Really excited to have the conversation about finally fixing Roshan. But I also need the space that our department has because we lack resources like green space. But I can't tell you how excited I am for you and your next step, because we finally have a national-
The smile and, and you've been a steady hand. I mean, that's the other piece to this. You, as was mentioned, I mean, you stepped up when we needed you. I mean, you've been serving in a, in a great capacity for a long time, and I got to work with Israel, Los Angeles Task Force and looking at the water conservation, how we can leverage that, and the AC tune-up program, and all sorts of things we got to work on. But really, the amazing thing is just, is the way that you, you took a department that was really on the edge in, in many ways, and you were that steady hand that said, "No, we are, we are utility. We're going to move forward in a positive way, and we're going to, we're going to regain the trust of our, of our community and our customers." And so I'm very grateful, on behalf of Los Angeles, Los Angeles is very grateful to you. And we just really wish you the best, and again, it's, it's bittersweet for that reason. So, thank you for all your service.
People live. Complaining about their local utility is a national pastime, and it's no exception here, and everybody likes to complain of reliable power, clean and safe drinking water, thanks to the incredibly hard work of all of the men and women of LADWP. And you've led them so capably that members, the title that Marty has is actually not General Manager of LADWP, it's General Manager and Chief Engineer. And Marty has really manifested that, I think, in his ability to find where you have to turn the screw. You know, which piece of the big machinery is loose that needs to be fixed. Marty is the consummate problem solver, and always has been throughout his career. And I think that's indicated by the comments, Marty, that you've heard from all of the members. It's, it's about figuring out solutions, and you've done that so capably throughout your career, and our loss is certainly going to be the nation's gain. I don't know, 2006 or 2007 or so, when I was working on the Renewable Portfolio Standard Bill in the Assembly, and you work for the LADWP. And then when we came here and got to work together, we created LA 100, which you led with gusto, against all expectations. I, I expected so much resistance from LADWP, but in fact, it was the opposite. And through your leadership, you inspired this department to really lead the nation in its, its move towards clean energy. In my district, you've, you've done what no other general manager of LADWP ever would have done, by finding ways that we can actually utilize the transmission corridors in some very park-poor areas of the San Fernando Valley. We have these massive areas of land, break through all the bureaucratic malaise, and get to the bottom of it, and really got us on target to start to utilize that land effectively for the people of Los Angeles. And so, you know, for all of those reasons, I'm, I'm incredibly grateful for your service. You've been such a great leader. You, your presence here will certainly be missed, but your presence here for all these years will, will continue to echo throughout this city, long after you're no longer physically here and you're enjoying your retirement. So, we're all tremendously grateful to you. And I'd like to give you an opportunity to, to come to the podium, if, if you'd like, with our thanks. Marty Adams, congratulations on your career.
Giving everyone the message at work that that work needs to continue, and I will certainly try to continue to be-
Before we bring up our next presentation, Mr. Herman, of course, you don't need warning because you're warned almost every meeting, but there will be no calisthenics in the back of the room, there will be nothing that distracts the attention of the members from the business of this committee. Only warning, sit down and be quiet. Sit down and be quiet. All right. Next, for our next presentation?
So, Item 13 is talking about the homeless, I'm guessing, on the streets, and I understand the concern, but if, if the landlord participation loophole is not closed in the ULA e-RAP program by Friday, there's a very good chance that the homeless population is going to increase. And I could be one of those people that could end up homeless. The program is supposed to prioritize handicapped seniors, and it's my understanding that senior population is the most rapidly growing segment of the homeless population, which I think is very sad. So I hope Councilperson Park will support any policy agenda that the council may have in mind. I know it's getting really late, but it would be great if, if she could support anything that might come up that would close that loophole.
You'll have one minute for general public comment?
For the last couple of months, I've been proposing a, a policy change. Everybody has a copy of it. I believe this is legal. I have a little bit of a background with contract law, and I think you can vote on this. I realize you're probably going to not vote on it today, but if you could get it done before the end of the month, that would be wonderful. And this would close that landlord participation loophole, and all of us seniors and- (sigh) Excuse me. Uh, we wouldn't have to be worried about, goddamn it, losing our homes. My apartment is my home. I've lived there for 10 years. I'm a good tenant. And, you know, please protect us. And on the back of this thing is my contact information, if anybody wants to-
Thank you, Brian.
-call me or email me, and I'm going to hang around-
Thank you.
...for a few minutes if anyone-
Thank you very much, Brian. Next speaker, please.
I'm sorry about my Eastern European last name. I'm Eddie Chalakova, and I am speaking on public general comment.
You'll have one minute.
Hello, council members. My name is Eddie Chalakova, and I am a member of the Democratic Socialist of America, Los Angeles. I am speaking today on behalf of a grassroots coalition of more than 40 labor, interfaith, and community organizations, calling upon Los Angeles City Council to pass a resolution in support of an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza for the flow of humanitarian aid into the region, and for the release of Israeli hostages and Palestinian detainees. Yesterday, all of your offices received a letter from our coalition detailing why the time is now for Los Angeles to call for a ceasefire. Over the last 10 weeks, we have been phone-banking and postcarding all of your offices and constituents, and we have found that the call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza is deeply and widely felt in Los Angeles. Council members, we invite you to meet with us and talk about the importance of-
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. I am also speaking about the issue that my comrade just spoke on about a ceasefire urging the city council to discuss the resolution that we have put, the statement that we have put forward, calling for a ceasefire. I want to talk about the fact that this is a local matter. It is not just an international and a national matter, but action starts at the local level. Our city is having a hard time with its budget right now. And meanwhile, the federal government is spending billions of dollars, sending it to Israel to participate, to, to, to fight this war against the Palestinian people. And that money should be going to provide services for the working people in our city.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I would like to speak on Items 12, 13, 14, 15, 21, and general public comment, please.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Item 12 is Declaration of Emergency from Rainstorms. Hasn't rained in a while, hasn't flooded in a while. I wonder why we need to keep re-declarating this emergency, what funding we're securing, when we declare it, and where that money's going. 13 is an expansion of 4118. Councilmember Roman, I really appreciate you paying attention. Thank you. So, this, we don't have a report back on 4118. We voted and passed a resolution to do a study and get a report back on the cost and efficacy, and until we have that, we shouldn't be expanding this program. I've seen sweeps done in areas where I work, and time and again, they're cleared from one area, they move a few feet away, they're cleared from that area, and when I do outreach with these folks, they say people show up, make promises, and they don't get housing, and their things get thrown away. So that's what's happening right now. 14 and 15, Los Angeles World Airport's CEQA exemptions. There's a lot of frustration from airport committees about this body's willingness to kind of let Lawa do whatever they want. This is a lease agreement, and among other things, but there's no feasible way that this should be exempted from the California Environmental Quality Act. We need to stop all of the jets and things going over our heads constantly. This isn't helping. 21 is Budget Commentary, which is weird, because we voted on that, but I do have more to say about the budget. (singing) The budget in a motion voted on it last Thursday. Our values in line items, you sold all our lives away. Giving most our funding to the LAPD. Such a bullshit motion, how do you recess for a whole day? Huh, Paul? We should cut your pay. Salaries in that budget, such undeserved high pay. Taking every crumb from us and giving it away. How is that okay? What do you have to say?
Speaker, you should move on to your next item.
Okay. So, I was almost done with the song. You could have cut me a little slack there. So I didn't, I didn't speak very long on that rainstorm emergency, but I still think it's bullshit that we're still calling that over and over again. And I wanted also to shout out my good friends Andrew and Camille, because I haven't shouted out them, but I really love them a lot. You entered the room at Studio City's meeting. You rolled your eyes because I was the first thing you'd seen. It almost seems like you're avoiding me. I think that's wrong because you make decisions for me. Well, Nithya Roman, I still want to debate. I have some questions for you. You're already the winning candidate. What do you have to lose? And I'm sure there's lots of things you'd like to say to me. Oh, Nithya Roman, I still want to debate. Do you accept or refuse? I'm right here anytime you want to answer me, Nithya. I'd love to ask you some questions. Again, shout out to my good buddies Andrew and Camille. I think the Fed tape leaks happened, so that I could meet those people I love so much. Also, smoke and scan, Brocklanders stinks, and my wonderful husband, Christopher, and a big fuck you to Kevin Daly on.
Next speaker.
Today, I wanted to speak up on the homelessness, just a tad bit.
Okay, you'll have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you so much, ma'am. In request, I would like to extend a Friday of a two-minute speech pertaining to me being welcomed back to City Hall. It's been a number of years that I haven't heard of the City Hall members and the, the works that they've done throughout the years, but I am very excited to know that, that our governor has $51.5 million for all of LA County for the homelessness. And I know that Hugo Martinez is in the 15th District that will be able to gear that into a successful LA County and LA City. I am a special particle of LA County. I am a county-born member, and I have $0 to my name today. I have been awarded through City Hall as a child, multiple, as far as FIACT papers of a reward of a business tribunes. I am bringing this-
Thank you. Thank you very much. Your time has expired. I'm going to call a few more names. Greenspan, Semire Berkowitz, Arnold Sacks, Herman, and then about eight childish fake names, which I assume are all Mr. Herman, but if there are anyone else, you're welcome to come on up and speak as well.
The first couple of items, oh, we know they're going to pass, and Council District Nine and Council District Four are these business improvement districts. Rah-rah. So, yeah, it's just procedure. Now, let's go look at this thing. Item 13. Yes, I look at Item 13 about going, it's almost as if we're taking the Joe Buscayino for mayor gimmick, and now we're, we're extending it citywide. I don't know if Park or Lee's going to be running for mayor, and it's their gimmick. It didn't work for Buscayino. People are still camped out. What I've heard, they compare us to New York, they have shelter beds we don't have. So, I think court cases are going to rule that if we don't have enough shelter spaces, that we have to let them sleep on the street. And when we're building high-cost, high-rent luxury apartments, that does not solve the homeless problem. So therefore, we force people on the streets with our $4,000 a month apartments that nobody can afford. So, I definitely have to talk about that. Now, we've got one on the Walk of Fame. Yes, number 20, Jenny Rivera, at 1750 North Vine Street. Now, these are great, the good thing about this, it's not going to cost us 10 cents. We don't have the money for it anyway. We're about $450 million in debt. But I love these things because when Reverend Jimmy Swaggart's talking to the prostitute, he'll say, "Okay, meet me at the Jenny, I'll, I'll pick you up at the Jenny Rivera sign at 1750 North Vine Street." It's a great, convenient location that you could use as landmarks, and it's great, so when Reverend Jimmy Swaggart comes out here, because he got caught with his pants down in Louisiana, that we at least can show some hospitality. Not as good as the southern hospitality, but some southern-type hospitality. Now, we have one of those vacation things, that's the previous one, or I should say, number 19. Why, if anybody has an extra $15,000, you can go get land, convenient land, under-market value, it only costs you about $15,000, that, and give to the campaign. This would be probably somebody gave to Tracy Park Place and has bought in some square footage. How wonderful. You guys are very generous. Now, let me go to general public comment, because we had a guy appointed to the board, a public, or DWP, Richard Katz. And back in '82, Kris Kringle wasn't Santa Claus, it was Richard Katz. He was in the Assembly. He gave $28,000 to the Mayor of Berkeley, the Lip Service Socialist Republic of Berkeley, Gus Newport, to write a report on plant closures, plant closures. Gus Newport never wrote the report, but he got the money. And I remember reading about it in the San Francisco Chronicle. I had never met Richard Katz, never lived in LA, and there was him in '82 playing Santa Claus. And I didn't write a report on plant closures. Mr. Herman didn't write a plant closures report. Nobody in this room, so where's our $28,000? I just thought the guy you recently appointed as a commissioner is also Santa Claus and would waste our money when he was in Sacramento. Fuck you.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak on?
General public comments.
You'll have one minute.
I'm not sure that you heard the news, but the country of Russia, which is 20,000 miles away from here, can be here in 10 minutes in case of war. You may not, that might not impress you, but the Los Angeles Times, Pacific Coast, Coast Guard, City of Redondo Beach, City of Palos Rides can prove that that's true. They have pictures of that if you want to order them. 10 minutes in case of war, they can be here in 10 minutes. This ship is 18 stories high, but I don't know how long it is. The people are not too enthralled with those big, the ship is gigantic. They're not enthralled with that because it deepens ocean floor by 100 feet, and I don't know what it does to the fishing, so they're not too impressed with that.
Coming dictator.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak on?
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak on all items to the dictator, pink face, and, and-
You have three minutes.
...not into the public comment.
And one minute for public comment.
Yeah, we're, we're still under an emergency after the rainstorms, because it hasn't fucking rained in the last two months, and that emergency money that you continue to steal from the state and federal assistance program is unavailable to people to fix their rundown inhabitable houses. Hey, look at Robin Nudo finally combed her hair. But let's stay on topic here. Let's instruct the general manager and your dumb, dumb mayor to manage the management of the budget to fix this state and federal problem in which you created a budgetary deficit, you dumb bitch. And, and advise the mayor and council to stick to the program. Stop stealing the money. Show where the money's at. I want an audit. I want to make sure that Mumu Mommy has money for her district. Gavin, if there has money for his district-
Speaker, you should move on to your next item.
What do you mean? I'm still on the subject. I'm talking about homeless bitches that are-
You get one minute for the items, you should move on to your next item.
Yeah, they're on the sidewalks in the street, and you racist motherfuckers continue to deliberately accost people after Judge Carter told you, "Fix the fucking problem." Isn't that what Judge Carter said to you, Monkisi? Hey, Zev, we're, we're speaking up here, Zev. You and Monkisi over there keep fucking interrupting my public comment when I'm talking about the chongles that you continue to discriminate against while they sleep on a sidewalk in the street, because you don't want to provide them with housing. It's an essential thing. It's not affordable, it's not rentable, they need fucking housing. Somebody talk to their dickhead attorney's office and tell them to get the stepping, because if you ain't going to get the stepping, Judge Carter's going to put his boot up your ass and tell you you're at default. And when you're at default, it means you fucked up.
You should move on to your next item.
Okay, let me go to the next item. Next item's regarding CD6, which Imelda and David Gutierrez of the Old Mission Financial Aviation Plaza were talking about aviation niggers. You know, we had the first niggers fly their planes into Germany occupied areas-
Speaker, you need to get back on the agenda item.
Yeah, 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 I'm talking about the, the great USA and how fucked up God hates you because you don't provide Mission Financial covering office spaces at the Aviation Plaza located on Sherman Way in Van Nuys, wherever the fuck that place is at. But I don't know, I went to Zev's district on Wilshire, and that fucking construction is fucking things up, really bad. I couldn't even get to the Peterson Museum to just enjoy it because it was all fucking ugly, not to my general public comment.
So, if your First Amendment is to censor people, why is that dickhead, pink-faced dictator up there trying to accost me without giving me the appropriate warning if I'm disrupting your stupid presentations? Why is that? If you're going to hold a presentation, and I'm on the outside of this fucking shoe-horse arena, I have every right to be back there making my exercise on, getting my gestures on, but I'm not disrupting your fucked-up presentations. They're all fucking boring anyways. No one cares. Even the people that come here are afraid to come because they see your stupid asses running this city to the ground because your dumb, dumb mayor doesn't have the answer for homelessness. We still got stabbing, shooting, and people sleeping and lying on the streets, and fucking up our public transportation. That's why you're niggers.
Next speaker.
So, these bids, they're a load of crap. We know that. Somebody's stealing the money from the public, nothing's getting done. It's a bid, or it's, they're being overpaid. It doesn't include city-owned property, doesn't include county-owned property. If you don't include city-owned property, then the business owners are getting screwed over. Lawa, why is it Lawa, not LAX, or Los Angeles World, Los Angeles World International Airport? Why did they build the gate for the Airbus A380 when the Airbus A380 is not flying anymore? Where are they getting the money from? Who's in charge? You're stealing public funds. You have a, you have a scam going on at the county with the assessors' office. The goddamn reprogram is tilted against low-income people because of the judges. They can't even get to a hearing anymore. I've sent people to go there, and they can't get into the hearings because of the judges are tilted against Mexican-Americans. That's why there's so many people that are homeless. It's homeless, not homelessness. When did it become homelessness? When James Hahn was the mayor of the city, he had a homeless plan that should have been $15 billion in 2001. It's 2024, you spent over $200 trillion. Where the fuck is the money coming from? You're stealing Measure M money, you're stealing Measure R money, you're stealing bus revenue. Nobody's paying. You're using the assessors' offices to make up for the deficit that's being created by LaDOT. Is it Los Angeles Department of Taxis?
Speaker, you should move on to your next agenda item.
Is it Los Angeles Department of Taxis, Los Angeles Department of Transportation, or Transportation? What the fuck is going on? Why can't they get funding for the fire department? There was somebody who cut the small business that took care of the fire department. Why is there so many? It's the drugs. It's the new normal. Somebody killed, somebody was on negotiating committee for the LA City, for LaSara. No, excuse me, for Lasers, Los Angeles City Employee Retirement System. It's different than in the county. It's all fucked up. It's been fucked up since somebody-
Speaker, it's not clear which agenda item you're speaking on now.
I was speaking on public comment. Could you stuff your face with a pie? I was speaking about LaSara and lasers and investments for employees. It's a closed system. It's been a closed system for 40 years. When I started coming to these meetings, you were allowed to speak on five, 10 minutes on each item. Then Herbie West was all about the new normal. This is my house, my house. What happened to Michael Hunt? What happened to-
Hold this time. Herman, turn it off. Turn it off. Turn it off. Your flashlight is shining in the council's eyes. Turn it off. Mr. Sacks.
It was the esteemed Melo Desire, Dr. Truthbe, who came into Board meeting and said, "Excuse me, Margaret Lee Thomas, these are your people. They're the black people. Margaret Lee Thomas, these are your people. They're the brown people. The advertisements on the Metrobus are so racist, it's incredible. It's the most racist city in the whole world, because there's four levels of government. You just don't give a shit about nothing. You want to, it's UHLA, it's not ULA, it's U-"
Thank you. Your time has expired. We're going to- Thank you, your time's expired. We're gonna go next to the callers on the phone. First caller, please. Mr. Sax, your time's expired. Sit down and be silent, please.
First caller, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, nerds and virgins. Brock Landers, Los Angeles Private Investigator. One, two, 12 through 21.
You'll have three minutes. You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
All right, one and two, I don't think they deserve that room. It's a pretty nice room. I think we should make them use a smaller room, make them earn it if they're gonna get something nice. Twelve, if we're still experiencing this many issues after a storm in February, door help us if we ever experience a decent-sized earthquake under this mayor. Maybe it's time that we cancel this playdate for the DEIT party and get someone to office that can make positive contributions. If you give people in power more power because of an emergency, they're always going to find an emergency to rule and hold over you and to hold on to that power. We need to watch out for the banditos that take advantage of these emergencies, and to the banditos that slept their messages. Thirteen, why haven't you guys been able to come up with a solution for some of these homeless people? Why does it keep getting worse? How much of that missing $24 billion could have went to helping these people instead of lining the pockets of people that contributed to the correct campaigns? Fourteen, taxis. Why do we still have taxis? Who are they paying? We need to stop with all these CQ exemptions. I don't know why we have CQ anyway. You guys keep acting like the environment is such a big deal, but you don't do anything to fix it, and you, all you do is give all these people with money, you know, "Oh yeah, you don't need to watch that, but, you know, God forbid somebody else, you know, burned something outside." Twenty-one, how long have we watched this great city fall apart? Maybe we need to stop asking the people that caused these issues to fix them. I was disappointed during the budget meeting that no one came to speak about the homeless, has taken the mayor up on her suggestion to take a homeless person home with them. Maybe we can get some money for an adoption fair like PetSmart does with dogs. I'm sure all of the country clubs you guys belong to would love to host one. John, talking about nepotism in the government, what kind of favors did you get from Marty Johnny? Happy birthday, BJ, a day late. And Bob, how disappointed were you? You didn't get one vote yesterday. General public comment. Marty, the rest of LA is going to miss you as much as I miss the committee my high school girlfriend gave me. If you want a better experience with stone fabrication, check out Smokin' Scan. It's hard to measure how much the quality of my stone has improved since Eamon helps me fabricate it. I usually have love on the left, respect on the right, and LA in the middle. Brock Landers has spread more love and respect to take care of LA, bring joy and hydrate Los Angeles than anyone else in this chamber or on the phone. Just ask Geeky Girl. Until next time, nerds and virgins, this has been Brock Landers, your friendly Los Angeles Private Investigator.
Next speaker, please.
So we have twelve, thank you for letting me have general comment while I pulled up the agenda. Oh wait, you didn't. Twelve is a state of emergency on rainstorms. You know, I don't, those rainstorms were a couple months ago. What projects are being done? Or are you just funneling money into your, into your, you know, friends, and there's actually no work being done or anything? Let's see, we have thirteen, 4118 motions from city staffer B and the most anti-unhoused member of the council, Officer Tracy Park, who's made it her whole thing is she hates unhoused people, and she just does it because she's a hateful person and wants to kill unhoused people. So, so thirteen is 4118 motion to force unhoused people to move down the street while destroying their belongings and killing them. And we're passing this motion, and you're passing this motion while you still are hiding the 4118 report back from the public. Where is the 4118 report back? Because, I mean, it's really, really, really overdue. And, you know, we've heard part of it, but we haven't heard enough of it. We need the full report back before you even think about passing any more motions. Because, I mean, you're, what, is this effective? Are people getting housed? And we all know it's no, because this is all about hurting and harming unhoused people and contributing to the fact that six unhoused people are dying. Let's see, we have, airports, we have twenty, Jenny Rivera on the Walk of Fame. Why are we doing Walk of Fame stars right now? There's a lot of crisis this should be addressing right now, but more Walk of Fame stars. Twenty-one is the budget, fuck the budget. You should, before you pass anything, you should hear a presentation from the People's Budget LA Coalition, and you should consider passing that budget. Defund and abolish the LAPD. All right, now moving on to my general public comment. Running a meeting, we've got, we got the lame duck council president, Paul Krikorian, who is a lame duck. He's leaving office, he's leaving the council presidency on September 20th. His time's almost up. He's a lame duck council president. So, I think there should be a resolution to move up his date of removal to this week. Put it on Friday's agenda and make it effective immediately. Let's get rid of Paul Krikorian now. Marquise Sillie isn't the greatest successor either. There's probably better choices than Marquise for council president. Kevin needs to go. Most of the council needs to go. Kevin's gonna lose reelection really badly. It's already, he, you know, did terribly in the primary. Got, what, like 20% of vote, something like that. And you know-
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Thank you. For those listening, I'd like to point out that for this posthumous honor for Mrs. Rivera, no sustengo nada contra este increíble cantante, my concerns are with the city of Los Angeles and the third parties who have continued to ignore very real requirements for the Hollywood Walk of Fame for years now. And they should have been addressed years ago. The Bureau of Engineering continues to provide a permit without Board of Public Works approval, and that's not allowed. And this council file, contrary to what the Bureau of Engineering says in the attached report, is not in accordance with the city's policies and laws. And the Bureau of Engineering hasn't addressed that. And until they do, this council's actions are continuing a process seemingly in violation of Los Angeles Municipal Code Section 62.105, 28.04B and D, and I still think the Department of Cultural Affairs is required to weigh in under the administrative code. I just received an email from the Board of Public Works saying they're scheduling a special meeting-
Speaker, you have one minute for public comment.
So, another aspect of the Walk of Fame is how does LA Charter Section 580 square with California Streets and Highway Code Section 5610? It's a very broad question, because in 2011, the superintendent of Street Services at the time stated in a sworn declaration that the city of Los Angeles does not exercise any maintenance responsibilities over the Hollywood Walk of Fame. None of this has been addressed by this body or any of the city's departments and agencies that should be addressing this issue. And I haven't received a response, a finding, from anyone about any of this. So until the city does, you should pause this vote, because it's in violation ostensibly. Thank you.
Yeah, danielgust.substack.com, item 21, and general public comment, please.
You'll have one minute for each.
Okay, danielgust.substack.com, obviously you know I'm calling about item 21, the budget. I would draw everyone's attention to the column I published this morning called "Ouch: The Painful Costly Consequence of City Hall's Gross Negligence," in which you shortchanged the budget with your budget hijinks and shell games. And I suffered a gruesome injury in a badly maintained city park, and I provide abundant evidence of all of the hazards just in this park. And as you know, you've misused other parks to hide undocumented immigrants across the city. As a result, my injury had me land on an operating table, and which I detail, and you could see the hideous experience that I've been put through, and as Mr. Krikorian-
Thank you, thank you.
One minute for general public comment.
Caller disconnected.
Thank you. Good morning, councilman, councilwoman, I should say, Rodriguez, Padilla, all of you. I want to first and foremost remind you that the city still has an active vaccine mandate. This is a plea. Please, please, end the tyrannical COVID vaccine mandate ordinance 187134, and rehire all the terminated employees. This mandate continues to impact people of color, as we are not allowed, we are not allowed, to gain access to city employment because of our religious belief. The time has passed. Sunset ordinance 187134. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mr. Reverend, we can move into general public comment now, straight off topic.
Is it time for general public comment? Oh, straight off topic. Well, I disagree. And what I would like to say about the budget is, I'm upset, because I know that Bloomingfield cares deeply about the theme of funding, but not just that, about the budget. And I just feel that the process was upsetting, because removing the public is not consistent with what the people want. We want to be participatory democracy, where you bring up a department, they talk, they say we've got a panda bear coming from China. We say that's great, and there's interaction between the public. Or they say we have a horrible deficit, and we would like to do some stupid revenue generator that will implode the city. And we want to say, no, don't do that. But we can't do it, because Bloomingfield likes to do a rackup in the back room, and he's following up on Krikorian, who really set the wheels in motion for one of the most draconian rollbacks of public input in the history of local government. So with that, I would just like to say to all of the assembled-
Thank you.
Hi, yes, the Studio City business district was targeted by a $3 million grant from the state and federal government for housing beyond house.
I'm sorry, Speaker, are you calling to speak on items one or two? Those are the only items that they have available for- Stream two? Okay. Please go ahead, sorry.
In the Studio City bid, there's a hotel that was a project room key, and then across the street, there's one that was an encampment to home, followed by augmented winter shelter, followed by inside safe. But yet, it's vacant, and it's been charging the same unhoused people nightly rates of $110. And the Studio City bid is going to demolish the Sportsman's Lodge, which has like 200 perfectly good units. I think that it should be commandeered and turned into housing or shelter. But yeah, the inside safe operating in this bid is not happening. I don't, I don't know how, like, they're charging these homeless people rent, $110 every night. When you look into it, the nonprofit is Essentia, and they have made marks on all of these case files of all these unhoused people, saying that they don't want to be sheltered there.
One second. Hi, can you hear me?
Which item would you like to speak in?
Well, I thought I could only speak on one and two, so I'll speak on one and two, please.
You'll have two minutes.
All right, so we have some property, some tract. You know what, I have to, I gotta confess, I didn't do my homework at Harvard what the word tract means yet. I'm really slipping on that. It just looks like some property real estate bullshit. I'm sure somebody's getting money that shouldn't be. I'm sure the property belongs to somebody, and it got transferred off for like a dollar or whatever bullshit that people act like doesn't happen with real estate. Act like we're children or juvenile for questioning something like a tract map or a parcel map or a tract property or a real estate fucking exchange, as if everything is just all kosher and fucking hunky-dory, and it all goes legal every fucking time. So, that's all I gotta say about that. Item number two is the Studio City Business Improvement District. You guys don't listen. I don't live in Studio City, but y'all don't listen to what the fuck people from Studio City say. You guys just tear down shit that they want there. You build shit they don't want there. And when the entire community, including small and big business gets together, you literally shut them out and ignore them. And you fucking give them word salad, nifty a ramen, when they ask you questions. You're fucking cowards. I hope the community of Studio City unites with the small and big businesses, finally gets over their pride, and unites with the workers and the poor people and the homeless around there. And I hope they just start occupying vacant office spaces and vacant fucking businesses and properties. Us workers and poor people can fucking be fucking bodies for them. We could, we can fucking commit to buying shit from them, and they can fucking lower rent on us or not even charge us. They can fucking, we can work together. Fuck these motherfuckers Business Improvement Districts. Cut the rent in half. That'll improve every fucking business. That's all you gotta do. Everybody just wants the rent lowered and stop tearing down shit they fucking want there, stop building shit they don't want there. It's that fucking simple. And yet, you wanna cut down the meetings so that we meet less, and you wanna get people out of the decisions for planning of land use management. It's nonsense. You don't wanna hear us, you wanna-
Thank you. Next caller, please. Next caller, please. He's off topic.
All right, I'm one and two, sir.
Caller, please go ahead. Speak to the item. Okay, next caller, please.